Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. King.
Present.
Mr. Schuster.
Present.
Dr. Rothschild, here.
Mr. McAndrew.
Present.
Mr. Smurl.
Here. Where is my original one? King.
No, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to take from the table file of Council Number 31 of 2024.
Second.
There is a motion on the floor and a second to take from the table file of Council Number 31, 2024, and place it in Seventh Order for a final vote. This ordinance is the City of Scranton capital budget for 2025. If anyone would like to speak on this piece of legislation, you may do so in Fourth Order, Citizens' Participation. On to question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so will... Dispense with the minutes, please.
Third Order 3A, correspondence received from City Business Administration on October 7, 2024 regarding updated payroll preparation tax collections as of September 24, 2024.
Are there any comments on any of the Third Order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I do receive a correspondence today. Gifts for Kids. So, this is a... Who is this from?
Catherine McCauley.
Oh, it's from the Catherine McCauley Center. A partnership, the Catherine McCauley Center, Catholic Social Services, and Friends of the Poor. Connecting the community with those in need to provide holiday gifts for children in Lackawanna County. All recipients must be pre-registered. There's an online registration link, which will be shared on Tuesday, October 15, at 10:00 a.m. on the agency's Facebook page. That would be the Catherine McCauley Center Facebook page, I believe. To be eligible, families must live in Lackawanna County. They have a household income under 200% of the federal poverty level, and have children under the age of 18. Families must be able to pick up gifts on December 15 or 16 in Scranton. Toy donations are also being accepted Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at 4:30, Pittston Avenue in Scranton, and that's the Catherine McCauley Center. Also, I'd like to announce, as I did last week, the Steamtown Marathon is scheduled for this Sunday, October 13. Starts at 8:00 a.m. in Forest City Regional High School. Early in the morning, the Biden Street will be closed. I mean, it's really early, so nobody should really be up. But like 5:00 a.m. until about 7:00 a.m., the buses will be lined up to take the runners up to Forest City. And then the race will begin at 8:00 a.m. I expect the first runner to arrive in Scranton somewhere around 9:45. So like between 9:45 and roughly 1:32 in the afternoon, runners will be coming from, basically from the Troup Line in Scranton through Greenridge and work their way right into North Washington Avenue to the finish line in front of the Lackawanna County Courthouse. So I just ask people to be a little patient with us. As there's gaps in the race, we try to feed traffic across the racecourse. But we're excited. We have over 1,050 runners from 36 states, nine countries, so it's pretty exciting. So we're looking forward to a great race. And as always, it benefits St. Joseph's Center. To date, we are completely volunteer. We have no paid staff. We've all been volunteers for 27 years, and we've raised over $2.4 million for St. Joseph's Center. And hopefully, I know that we've had an economic impact on our region, too, bringing these runners in from all over the country. So we're excited about it. We just ask the residents to please be a little patient on Sunday morning and early Sunday afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anyone else?
Yes, I wanted to add that for the Gifts for Kids, we do also have the information on that available in Spanish, so if anyone needs that or wants to hand that out to any Spanish-speaking families that would benefit from it, then just let us know. We could get that handout to you. And then I also wanted to congratulate the Greenhouse Project on another successful Honeybee and Harvest Festival that took place over the weekend. I've been absent from here and not able to attend a lot of things recently because of illness, but there were a lot of great things that I missed out on. We had the Scranton Fringe Festival that had just ended, but I was able to make it to the Harvest Festival, and it's just a really wonderful thing. I think it gets bigger and bigger every year, and it was a beautiful day for it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Anybody else?
I have two trunk-or-treat announcements that are coming up. One is called Giving Back to the Community. It's the Third Annual Trunk-or-Treat Event, and it's at Naught Park. It's Saturday, October 19, from 12 to 4. There's a rain date, Saturday, October 25, and they're having a contest for the best decorated trunk. You know, they need some sponsors, candy, trunkers, and volunteers are needed. And for more information with regards to that, you can go on givingbacktothecommunity5@gmail.com. And then the second one will be the local DPW Workers Union. They do this every year. The past couple of years, they do a great job. And their trunk-or-treat this year will be Saturday. It's usually during the week, but this year it's on a Saturday, October 26, from 3:30 to 6:00. And it will be, again, at the Scranton DPW Parking Lot over on 101 West Poplar Street. And they'll have a bunch of their equipment out. Their trucks and heavy equipment will be on display, which is pretty cool, so that's a nice one to attend. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fourth Order, Citizen Participation.
And first, Joan Hoda-Wanis.
Joan Hoda-Wanis, Scranton. I have here, in my arthritic hands, the current collective bargaining agreement for the firefighters. It was signed on September 24 and posted on the city's website yesterday. So at least we have the firefighters' agreement posted online. Still waiting... This only took 18 months, by the way, since when it was signed by the arbitrator and he made his decision. So now we have to see when we're going to get the police collective bargaining agreement. That was signed on July 28, 2023, so it's been over a year for that.
Joan, that is also on there. All of those lines, they're not really... You can't really understand. There's a lot of numbers and stuff. But if you go back on that file, and the Police Department and the FOP Arbitration Awards with all of the changes, they are all there.
Where are they? Because I checked this afternoon, and I didn't see the Police Department's...
Yeah, they're there. There's like nine rows of things. I don't know which way you went to them.
I went under the city archives, under collective bargaining agreements.
Okay, so if you go down, not the first column, the second row down, the second one in, that is where the... I'll show you where they're at.
Okay.
They are going to make them more legible, so that you can actually know what it is. Right now, there's a bunch of numbers and stuff to match all of the stuff that they...
Yeah, there was only one that was posted in 2024, and that's this one, firefighters.
But the DPW is there, the CBA contract is there, and the old Clerical Union contract is there.
What about the police?
The new one is not. The police is there with the arbitration awards and a lot of the changes. Now, they said that...
No, I want the re-typed document. I have the arbitration award. That was posted a long time ago.
Right.
In July of 2023.
Yes.
What we need is a fully typed document.
Okay, I'll show you how to get to that.
Okay. How are we doing on the audit?
The audit, we are still...
Parking authority?
This week, we should have the parking authority. Then the administration will need two weeks to finish, and then it will be done.
Okay. How are we doing on the Dicks Court investigation?
The Dicks Court investigation? So the information I'm going to give you, you're not going to like it, but I'm still going to give it to you. The city will not be releasing any information to the public about the incident. The insurance company that was dealt with this is satisfied with the changes that were made, that were recommended, and they were happy with everything else that had taken place, as far as the shredder's beam implemented and stuff. So that is where it's left right now.
I think I don't find that acceptable. I was here the night that Tom Coyne was given his document and virtually accused of some misconduct, and I think it bodes in the city's court to explain what happened and to tell the public, because it's not just employees that were involved. There were names of next of kin and everything else who would not be employees. So it affects the general public, and I think that's a mistake. And I hope, Tom, you don't let it drop. 5C, the appointment of Megan Alpert to the Scranton Housing Authority. She did not post a resume. All she has is a letter of intent. Does anybody know who this woman is? I don't.
Megan Alpert?
Yep.
I know her. She lives in the Hill section. Her maiden name was Megan McDonough.
Well, she said in her letter...
She just opened the business, Joan, downtown here, financial investor.
She still should post a resume, shouldn't she not?
No, you asked if anybody knew her. I was just telling you, I did know her.
All her letter...
Excuse me, Joan. Joan, we do have a resume, and it was to be updated. I believe it's updated on the website now.
Okay, all right. Because I would like to see her. I would like to see something about her background. She said that she's got a strong network of professional education and qualifications and relevant work experience.
Yeah, it should be on the website now.
Okay. 6A, loaning the refuse truck to the school district. What is the term of the loan? I looked at the document, and it said...
The original request, Joan, was like for 30 days.
Okay, because all it says in the document is, "Original term shall commence on the commencement date."
Yeah, and if required, if both parties agree to extend it for a few more days if their truck doesn't arrive.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Morgan?
And Mr. Volmer, could we get the term of that loan?
I'll get it, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Lee Morgan. The first thing I have here is that I really appreciate the fact that Donald Trump is coming here, and I hope that in the election, he manages to win the city and set a new tempo for us, because we definitely need a wind of change to come through here. But, you know, I think the residents should consider a couple of things, because we're going to have a mayoral election relatively soon, and some council seats are going to be vacated here while they're going to be up for reelection. And this city definitely needs to change direction. Something has to be done with American Water, and maybe it's time for the city to consider using eminent domain to get control of the water company and the sewer authority again, and let the court set a value on both, and let the city float some bonds and get control of these two entities, because the water quality is absolutely terrible. And people can't afford to live here with the rates as they are. And what brought us here was political corruption and a very corrupt mayor and a very corrupt council, in my opinion, pushed this deal through. And it's been a detriment to the residents, and something has to be done. And we can't rely on the PUC to bail us out, because that's not going to happen. And just the way the city is going, we definitely have to do something about all the grant money floating through here, all the nonprofits. We need a rewrite of the Home Rule Charter. We need to decide what kind of government we really need and want, and this is a complete failure. We have to decide what we're going to do with the city's pensions. Should we turn them over to the state, or shouldn't we? Because I really can't see how 75,000 people are going to carry all this burden. We've got to enter into some kind of idea of what reality is, because we're definitely not facing that now as the city just disappears. As you walk around the city and you go into the downtown, we have a ton of vacant lots. We have a lot of vacant lots throughout the whole city, and we have no real economic development, because the council hasn't chosen to do that. You know what? There was a conversation taking place in here before the council came here, and there were some comments about, you know, Mr. Gahan saying that the people in Scranton aren't very intelligent. That's what I took for the conversation, and I could be incorrect on that. But you know what? He's absolutely right. We went through 30 years of distress, and we haven't restructured our government. And we pass grant money around as if it's candy, and the people who really need the grant money never get any. It's really amazing. We keep electing people that are allegedly going to turn the city around, but we keep just slipping further and further behind. And when we sold the sewer authority, it should have been... All the light should have came on, because the PUC never should have allowed that. And when you see the quality of the water we're forced to drink and the antiquated filtration system that we have, and we have to look at our elected officials and say, "What are you doing to help us?" Nothing. A city cannot sustain itself unless families can afford to live here. And if they can't afford to buy water and drink water, how are you going to convince people that they have a future here? And if you don't have economic development and a business incubator, trying to create jobs that will sustain a family? I mean, all the silliness about moving all the grant money and, you know, the University of Scranton up on the hill and all the colleges. You know, we appreciate them being here, but somebody's got to take some of the burden off us. And when you take a look at how you've handled all the flooding we've had recently, and for decades, all that work had to be done, and it wasn't done. And then you get the residents who put signs up about restoring the pride. And the biggest looter of the city was Chris Dougherty. What he did to the municipal... The city's pensions are just beyond belief when he took them off Mellon Bank. And the council let it happen, and they've let a lot of things happen here. We've got to abolish all of these authorities. They have to go. And we have to collect all the debt they have, and we have to figure out what we're going to do with it. But you know what that takes? Leadership, and we don't have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Bolus?
Bob. Wake up. Good night. Oh, damn, sure am. I'm going to look at that.
Evening, Council. Bob Bolus, Scranton. What I'd like to do is kind of bring everybody up to speed on something here. Our location in Troup is now the official distribution center for the Northeast for the hurricane relief that's going on in North Carolina and right now in Florida. We're asking everybody that if you have anything to contact my office, it's 570-346-7659. It's Bolus Truck Parts. We're accepting all-time donations, but don't bring us your used clothing. It's got to be new and in packages, or we will reject it. Non-perishables. Take anything you have. Diapers, anything of that nature, but it all must be new and in packages. We've already just sent two trailers that I loaded up out of Albany, New York, that have gone into North Carolina. I have three sitting to go to Florida down Annemarie Island, where I have a condo complex, and I have a commercial business down there. And that's going to be the central distribution center for Annemarie Island, Holmes Beach, where our location is, Bradenton Beach, Coquina, and Lungbo Key. I have properties on Bradenton Beach that I hope they're standing after this hurricane hits. I'm right on the Gulf, 82 feet to the water. We already took one hit, and I fear this one's going to wipe us all out. The island looks like a bomb shelter that's been wiped right out. And prayers go out to everybody that's on the island for what they've lost, because insurance doesn't cover 95% of what's going on down there. So a lot of people are going to be hurt on it. And this being the food that we're shipping, that I'm donating, is being donated by myself. Bob Bolus Stores and Truckers are the ones hauling it. But a lot of the products that we are donating, the wipes and things, are by myself and my fellow masons, that are all here in the Scranton Consistory and the Shrine that I'm a member of. So what we're trying to do is take care of that. Now, last week, I had an issue with Gahan over at the Government Building, where we had a sheriff grab my shoulder. He didn't like what I had, or respond to his accusations. And some woman in front of me made a smart comment. She turned around, and she engaged me. I had nothing to do with her. And I just basically told her it was none of her business, and she didn't like my shirt that I was wearing. And I told her, "That's your next president." And I went and sat down. He ordered the sheriff to remove me from the meeting, which he physically manhandled, my left shoulder, where I've just had surgeries and this stuff on. And I've already had to go for medical treatment and everything else regarding it, and it's insulting that somebody could think that they're above all of us. You know, I haven't seen any of you guys try to do anything nonsense. You let us speak, and let us do what we got to do. And for a sheriff to grab me without authorization from, like Gahan, he's not the sheriff, he's not an authority, and there's going to be an issue over it. They made an issue of the trailer I parked out front, and Chris Cherm... Or not Chris Cherm, but Chris Kelly kept making a comment. It was the Trump trailer, Trump trailer. It was Gahan's former skunk trailer, with his head on the body of a skunk. He skunked us when he was sitting here, and now he's skunking everybody, thinking he was a lot smarter and brighter than anybody that came in the room. And I challenged him on he never was an employer like some of us are and know what it is to make a payroll. But he made the insult that a bunch of the people there were pretty much stupid. And I made the comment to him that in the past, I would say, "Respect is earned, but not demanded." In his case, since he was boasting how brilliant he is, I said, "Respect is learned, not demanded." And he didn't learn any of that. So what he pulled, the curb out front, Jeffers made comments that I blocked it with the trailer. I have a handicap sticker, I have the government sticker, and I'm a veteran. So three out of four with the CYS parking space blocked, partially by the back of the trailer, you could walk around or move the sheriff's car out of there or anybody else blocking it. But the irony is, there is not a curb cut. It's almost an eight-inch-high curb that's out there. You can't get over it with a wheelchair. You can't do any of that. If you want to take a wheelchair, go all the way down Wyoming to Spruce, where the handicap ramp or access is. So they're showing their mouth off. I blocked the handicap area for veterans or anybody else. And the ignorance part is, they need to cut a curb cut and put a ramp there. Don't say I blocked the bus stop, because I wasn't anywhere in the bus stop. So this is the ignorance that we're dealing with on a daily basis. But if you're going to take care of our handicap and our veterans, then my message to Gahan with his mouth is to go out there and put a new curb cut in that a wheelchair could be accessible, and don't let anybody park near the darn thing at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bolus. Ron Elman?
One more thing I may say if I can. I'm proud to say I'm wearing the Trump shirt. He was saved by Jesus Christ. I put on there divine intervention, and he's coming to our town, and we need to respect that a former president or the future president still respects all of us, even though we're a liberal Democrat. You won't see the mayor or any of the other guys there.
Thank you.
But I'm proud to say we're Americans, and thank you guys for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Elman?
People, many, many years ago, Daddy Elman told me, "Never put nothing in print. You don't want to come back and haunt you." That should go double for some is Chris Kelly. Maybe he needs to watch television and see what happens all the time with these people reading computers. Mr. Nice is nothing more than a over-the-hill has-been. Bob Bolus is an American. Kelly's support in the paper in articles of Dominic Sadati is just... Sadati is a despicable pro-Hamas, anti-Israeli, anti-Jewish. He's just a racist. And Kelly brags about his friendship with him, and then tries to demean this man that has done more in one night than Kelly has for this city in these articles, one after another. Well, in my opinion, Kelly's a disgrace to the paper in the city. Next is about this excuse for a mayor. I just hope she doesn't have another disgraceful encounter, turning her back on Mr. Trump like she did last time. She's supposed to represent the city, not the Democratic Party. In the last two Fridays of the paper, there were scores of foreclosures. These are so heartbreaking. I've talked to several people over the years, and these people have lost their most... I don't know. I guess the most precious accomplishment and possession of their lives in losing your home. And yet, there's big articles, "We need money for sons for downtown." This incompassionate excuse for a mayor has just got to go. It's time you people start thinking of a replacement next year, looking at these sweltering sons for the city she intends to be here. You know, we're facing all this new taxation from reassessment, the county, the city, the schools, and this woman's interested in expensive signs for downtown. Now, I've got a little something for you people. Start thinking what the city's going to do if some of these developers want to go nonprofit, and it's being investigated by someone. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all for our sign-in sheet. Would anyone else like to address counsel? Sir, your name and address?
Gideon Diaz, Catherine Drexel House, University of Scranton. Yes, I was going to talk... One of them brought up really good points, like the guy was talking about eminent domain and like investment and stuff like that. So just writing off what he talked about, like on Sunday, just to start off, I was... I went on a walk with like this organization called Greenhouse. You guys brought it up, too. And we went to the festival, and then on the way there, all the sidewalks were awful, like very awful. And then also, sometimes when I ride my electric scooter, like sometimes I'm scared of just dying. But that aside, like just little investments, like you was talking about the empty lot, just little investments could go a long way. And the way that like things are looking over here, like it's just stuck. You know, it's not going up or down, and you need to invest, invest, and just little investments like the sidewalks, empty lots, will bring the money back into the community and then bring money back into everybody's pockets in a way that everybody can flourish, hopefully, if it plays out like that. But things are looking very stuck, and even just like sidewalks.
Start thinking what the city's going to do if some of these developers want to go nonprofit, and it's being investigated by someone. Thank you.
Thank you. That was all for our sign-in sheet. Anyone else like to address counsel?
Gideon Diaz, Catherine Drexel House, University of Scranton. Yes, I was going to talk, one of them brought up really good points, like the guy was talking about eminent domain and like investment and stuff like that. So, just writing off what he talked about, like, on Sunday, just to start off, I was- I went on a walk with like this organization called Greenhouse, you guys brought it up too, and we went to the festival. And then, on the way there, the- all the sidewalks were awful, like very awful. And then also, sometimes when I ride my electric scooter, like sometimes like I'm scared of like just dying. But, that aside, like just little investments, like you was talking about the empty lot, just little investments could go a long way. And the way that like things are looking over here, like, is just stuck. You know, it's not going, going up or down, and you need to invest, invest, and just little investments like the sidewalks, empty lots will bring the money back into the community and then bring money back into everybody's pockets in a way that everybody can flourish, hopefully, if it plays out like that. But, things are looking very stuck, and even just like sidewalks. Little kids can't operate on a sidewalk, old people can't operate on a sidewalk, you know? So, yeah, that's pretty much it. Thank you. Investments.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, Joseph Zarkevsky, Tripp Street in Delmore. So, I was at the Italian Festival a couple of weeks ago. A firework had landed in my child's stroller, burning his clothes, his stroller. So, I went to request some information from the right-to-know law. In regards to that, I requested the permit that was pulled regarding the fireworks itself. And it's- I got a response stating that I would need to wait at least 30 days, or 30 days are required to get this permit, which I found very strange that you would need to take 30 days to request, to get information that is electronically submitted to you guys. So, I did do a submit for the fireworks that were shot off on July 3rd, which I immediately received a response within two days of the entire permit. So, now I receive the permit for the original request for the Italian Festival. That is a total of two pages. The permit that you, or the information that you guys sent through the right-to-know request from the July 3rd is a total of 14 pages. So, then I'm looking at this right-to-know request, and the information that you guys sent me through the City Hall, the permit was issued on 9/3. So, the fireworks and the event that this happened was on 9/1. So, it's kind of questionable how you guys like allow this to be, to go off.
If I could just clarify, it's not us guys. City administration would be the ones that-
So, city administration. So, city administration allowed this to happen, allowed this event to happen without a permit being, being pulled, which is against 2022 Act 74. Right on there, Chapter 11 states that the city needs to have a permit pulled along with verifying insurance. So, also, when I received the right-to-know request, in the permit itself, it needs to have the insurance information. The insurance information was not in that permit request. All right? So, then I did go ahead and request the insurance information as another right-to-know request under that specific date. And what I received was a actual insurance policy from a event that happened six months ago, not even the right date. So, I think we, I would like to know why I'm getting misinformation and why a permit was not pulled for this event.
Well, sir, we won't have any of that information. We are not any way connected with the daily operation of the city. That would be our licensing and inspection department. Maybe if you went there and asked for the supervisor, maybe they could get that straightened out for you. I, we don't have any of that, and nor do we have access to any of that.
Okay. What about the safety of, of the event itself? You know what I mean? So, before the fireworks even went off, the Scranton Police stated that they weren't sure if the fireworks going, were going to go off due to the wind. They still allowed them to go off. The fire department was there, they didn't put a halt to them. The only reason why a halt got put off is because my kid got hurt and another child got hurt. Why was it allowed to happen?
Sir, could you also leave your information with Allison there?
Yeah, I don't have an answer of why it happened. We don't run any of that. So, that I would suggest to go back to licensing and inspection. They have all that information, and perhaps sometimes the people file for a permit. I know myself, if we put a permit in, it may not, depending on how busy that department is and people are off, and it may take a few days to get it back. So, but if you're in and your permit's in in time, then it's considered.
The inspection, it states that when it needed to be inspected also before they allowed the permit, the inspection wasn't done until two days afterwards.
Yeah, see, again, maybe a licensing and inspection can help you with that.
They told me to pull a right-to-know request, and that's what I did, and I'm not receiving the accurate information regarding this request.
I'm very sorry to hear what happened to your child. What happened that night was horrible and horrific. I get it. As our body, I mean, we can inquire somewhat, and it's unfortunate that you're hitting, you know, hitting some walls here, but for you to receive an insurance policy of another event that was six months prior, that's alarming to me.
I'll leave all this information here, and you guys can review it.
Yeah, please leave your name and number, and you know, let's, we'll see what we can do.
Sure.
Now, are you still waiting? Are you still within that 30-day period for that other information, or are we outside of that 30 days right now?
No, I just received that information today, but it's only, like I said, two pages compared to 14 pages from the one prior. So, it seems like a lot of information's being redacted. Even, even stuff that I have in a police report, that the information that I have in a police report is redacted on the right-to-know request. But, like I said, I then put a second right-to-know request for the insurance information, and I received the wrong one.
Yeah. Yeah, if you could please leave your, your information there, and if you want to leave that information as well.
Frank, with that information, we follow up, take it, maybe follow up with licensing and inspection and see what they can do with any of that.
I'll do that, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
How are you, Counsel? Daniel McGovern, resident, New York Street. I've had a major concern the past, well, pretty much since 2012, since I moved into my house on New York Street. But, the intersection of Capous and New York Street, it's a very dangerous intersection, and it's caught my attention in recent years because of a, my children are bussed. It's a bus stop. It's very hard to navigate for motorists. It's very difficult to cross that street. A lot of motorists use that street as a, to avoid the lights on Washington, et cetera. A lot of speeding. I was in contact with the mayor's office last May, trying to get an answer on how to make this a four-way stop sign. I was redirected to DPW. DPW redirected me down to City Hall. City Hall told me to go to a council meeting. I'm here now, basically, not only for the concern for the motorists, pedestrians, but it's a bus stop. And when I can't be there for my children, I have four children that get off the bus there from Howard Gardner School, and said 7:30 in the morning and about 3:30 in the afternoon, there are people that fly by and do not stop. It's very dangerous. Somebody's going to get seriously injured or killed. It's going to happen. It's inevitable. And I would like, I had been redirected from the mayor's office to DPW to City Hall, now up to here.
Okay, then, what we will do is, Mr. Boldenburg, will you request a traffic study on that intersection?
I will. I'll request a traffic and a site study by the city engineer.
Thank you.
And City Hall.
So, we will put a request in for a traffic study on that intersection. And what that does, they'll go there and watch the traffic and then give us the results, whether it requires a four-way stop sign or whatever it may need.
They'll make a recommendation.
Right now, it's a two-way stop on New York Street. There's no stop signs on Capous. And ironically, it's one of the only two, maybe three, that are not four-way stops or have a traffic light on Capous Ave.
Okay, that's what the traffic study will show us.
Can the traffic study come during a bus, when the children are bussed?
That's not up to us. That's a private, I don't know.
I mean, that's where my major concern is.
Well, they should, and Mr. Boldenburg will make note of that.
Yeah, make the request that they look during the times when children are being picked up, you know, in the morning and in the afternoon, if they, when they do that study, please. We will.
And that, you take, this is the first step, so without you telling us, we don't always know that there's, there's a problem in your area. So, the traffic study's the first step, and-
And how, how long would this study take?
Well, that's-
I don't know where they're at.
I would estimate a few weeks.
I'll do the study for free and then submit it to you. You know what I'm saying?
We need the engineer to do that, and, but, all we do is pass it off to that department, and then they will schedule it, and, but at least it's on record now for you.
And then they'll come back to us with the report as to what has been determined. Hopefully, it will be a four-way stop.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Boldenburg?
Yes, sir.
While we're with that as well, can we look at the Swetland, the Swetland request that was put in last week?
Right.
Just to follow up on that one as well?
I'll follow up. That was submitted. I'll follow up on it.
Thank you very much.
Virgil Argenta, Scranton, 5B, regarding social contract LLC, two-year contract to help reduce and prevent violent crime. Did we not learn our lesson with Mufahan regarding violent crime and gang studies? Wasn't the holistic approach with candles and incense enough for $200,000?
I'm sorry, your-
She forgot it.
Wasted more money in using another outside organization, also with the mention of creating a nonprofit. Is the administration trying to tell us, or are they assuming that our top-notch Scranton Police Department, the Lackawanna County detectives, and the prestigious Pennsylvania State Police are not capable of doing the job that they were sworn to uphold? Remember how the city of Scranton changed the police testing from LEAB, Law Enforcement Aptitude Battery Testing, to the National Testing Network? Because as it was stated, they were going to get us the best of the best of the police officers. How's that working out? Or was that also a failure, considering 130 applicants took a test and less than 10 may be passed? If you have so much money to waste, why not reinvest it in our police department's manpower or equipment? Why not revise full-time specialized units that would make a difference in the city? We don't need outside organizations to tell us how to run a police department, nor do we need a mayor with no experience to tell us how to run a police department. Our funds, our city, our input. Stop wasting our money on outside agencies. Now, regarding 6A, will the school district transfer all insurances on the garbage vehicle to the school district's insurance carrier immediately? In regards to the breakdowns and wear and tear, who will be responsible for that truck? Last night's school board meeting, it was discussed, and it was stated that their garbage truck's frame was rotted, cracked, and unrepairable. They have no timeline to replace that vehicle. It was stated that they would check with Enterprise Rental and see if there's any way that they can rent a unit from Enterprise Rental, that a new unit would be $500,000. We may want to clarify how long they will have our truck and who will take the responsibilities in the event of a breakdown or an accident or someone getting hurt. Let's start running the city like it's a business.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Marie Schumacher, citizen of city of Scranton, not too far away from the lookout, which continues to lose stones. Now, DPW is doing a pretty fair job of replacing them, but something needs to be done there. Now, I have a cousin who went up to Lackawanna State Park yesterday, I believe it was, doesn't really matter, but they have lights up there that are solar-driven, and maybe that's what we need up there. I mean, as I say, it's still, lighting, it is not going to stop what's happening, but I'm sure it'll cut back because people will be afraid somebody's going to come down and see them taking away the stones. So, just a thought, maybe the administration could see about those other lamps. And, no, I just looked at this, it's 5, 5A. I do not understand why we're going to hire somebody from the outside when we have a lot of brains in the building. I mean, why, why is everything going out? Anybody know?
Marie, is that the Violence Intervention Prevention Program?
Yes.
Oh, that's, that's what you're speaking of?
That was a-
Yes.
Yeah.
That, we are actually doing that with Lackawanna County, with the District Attorney's Office, and, and many other law enforcement agencies are all grouping together on this, and that's what's being formed now. It's not just us.
Oh, okay, but I still think it could be done by in-house and not spending-
Well, if we're involved with multiple organizations, it wouldn't be fair just for us to run it. It would have to be somebody independent, I believe.
Yeah, this was one that the mayor was in, in a caucus a few months ago. They were going to base it off of what New York, Pennsylvania is doing. The police chief was in, and as Mr. Smurl said, it was going to be in conjunction with Lackawanna County and the DA.
I forgot about that, yeah, thank you. Okay, and now, I have to say, I love what Charlie Jefferson is doing in the 300 block of Adams Avenue. When I read that in the paper today, I had to go down and take a look, and it's, it's going to be absolutely beautiful, I think. And I thank him for what he does for this city. Now, the 500 block of Lackawanna Avenue, I would like to say, I believe that is the worst block in the city. I really feel like I should take one of those pills that you have to take when you go out on a ship before you go down 500 of Lackawanna, because you're, that's about the same way you feel, and something should be done. And then, what is the status of reassessment? I mean, you know, like today, there was, there were two properties that were in the transaction article. One was sold for 13, or 1 million, $300,000. The other was for $1,200. And I thought, oh, that's, that's really good. They're a lot alike. And then I looked it up, and one of them, the, the assessment is $46,000, and the other is $78,000. Now, I didn't have time to go out and take a look at the difference, but it seems to me that we really need to get that reassessment. And when does it, when does it tie up and we get our assessments and et cetera?
Marie, I'm not sure how, how far the county is on that right now. I thought it was supposed to be by the end of this year for the entire reassessment of the county, but I'm not sure exactly where they're at right now with that.
Well, it can't happen soon enough for a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings, Counsel. First of all, I'd like to make a comment about the fireworks. I understand kicking at the administration, but by the city charter, public safety is the domain of city- the domain of city council. Public safety is this body. The mayor enforces it, but the charter says this body here is in charge of public safety. So trying to kick that gentleman's case along saying we don't touch it is exactly opposite of what the city charter says. I understand you don't want to be involved in making rules for public safety. You certainly dodged that during the epidemic by letting the mayor run it, even though the charter specifically says it's your domain. Pass the buck. Onto the audit. I guess the, for the records left out back, since we're not gonna talk about it, have you inquired whether or not the F, the Federal Trade Commission has been contacted, their identity theft division? That it's just not internal to the city, because any identity theft should be reported to federal agencies. Has the city done that? Do we know?
I do not know.
Okay. Last, I'm sure that Brittany Hammer has probably been contacted because her personal information, including social security and all that, was left out front. That's right, Brittany Hammer, you were exposed, and I, as this goes on and does not get any statements made publicly, I will continue to divulge names of people who were out there and exposed to find out whether or not they've been contacted properly and informed and I see we just opened a PAVE contract inspection, contract. Hey, it's only a half a million dollars for a year. Hey, we got lots of money. I mean, do we really need to pay a half a million dollars for a PAVE cut inspection by bid, or can't we just hire someone? I understand we don't hire people anymore with competence, we bid it out for a ton of extra money and hand it out to people for a half a million dollars. The charter, can I get a copy of the charter? Can I get it scanned, emailed to me? The original charter, not code 360 because the verbiage was changed. It's still not up there on the website, I did check, it's not there. Is there any feedback on DPW? As a letter from the DPW director involving the money exchange for the parks. Do we know why the DPW director is doing a budget exchange for the parks request? Or are we also not gonna address that because we don't want to touch anything related to Scott Gasmyer? DPW, I would love to see some of the people out there who are actually on, casual workers who work 30 hours a week and get paid $14 an hour, and who've been there for over two years, actually get shifted onto union to get benefits, to actually become DPW workers. I've met a few of them, and they do fantastic jobs. But when you're getting Walmart Pay and Walmart 30 hours a week with no benefits for years, when you're picking up trash in rain and sleet and snow, is unfair. There should be a time when casual workers are actually transitioned, period. They shouldn't be Walmart checkout people forever, when they're doing the job that they're doing. Recycling, by doing nothing and not halting the recycling and using the dump exclusively, we are now at $14,345 that the city has lost because of inaction to put a moratorium on the process. Just keep throwing our money away, and every week I'll bring it in, and this number will rise until it's changed. 15 grand, I guess that's nothing. Fire for homeowners. I understand the original reason for having the fees in there were for auto accidents, for oil spills, for the absorbent that has to be used. It was never intended to penalize someone who had a fire in their house. I would like to thank Mr. Schuster and Mr. McCandrew for pushing it forward, because people who've gone under these devastation should not be having to pay for a disaster, and this body needs to act on it, not ask for advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. David Dobson, resident, taxpayer. I was over at Harrison Avenue Bridge again today, and it looks like, to me, that there's more cracks appearing in the safety wall along the sidewalk. And my point is that whenever cracks appear in concrete, they should be repaired immediately and not put off or described as minor. Once the water gets in there, it just sinks in. If you ever went to chemistry class, water is the universal solvent. It dissolves everything eventually. So, please, I don't know who's responsible for it, or who would have to go in to it, but let's not have it falling down in five or 10 more years or needing major work. We have a lot of good hydraulic concrete and cements that could seal that up for years. And on to recycling, it's time to separate metal and glass and plastic. That would be the linchpin for the whole works. You could take, even if the cans were, are too heavily compressed, you could take a sledgehammer to them and knock them apart or something, and, by the way, the metal cans are far more valuable than, than plastic bottles or glass, or glass, it's probably a better way to get somebody injured on that chute that it dumps down, and I've heard of bottles flying through the air, like broken bottles and stuff, so that's all on the occupational insurance. And it's time to vote. So, my ballots are at the House. Be pragmatic. Vote with your better interests. The 2025 document, done by 29 Trump associates and the Heritage Foundation, wanna put the kiboshes to Social Security, Medicare, Veterans Care, health insurance, Blue Cross, Blue Shield. You know, a couple of weeks ago, I mentioned that George Bush approached Pennsylvania Blue in 2006, and they got a billion-dollar donation. Now, I think that would be better if it went to a hospital, it was for chip insurance, and why can't you put your own, your own career, political career on the line and do something right? That should have been paid by taxes for kids. And I wouldn't have it any other way that they don't have it, I don't oppose chip insurance. However, about early 20, 2007, the Blue Cross owed me $600 in copays that I covered, and they were playing hardball with it. They wanted documents, they wanted this, they wanted, I used to pay my doctor right up front in the office, I'd write a check, and I thought that was the way it was supposed to be. Well, they wanted me to let a bill come to the House, and then I could pay it or whatever, and then they could use the bill as, to justify the coverage. It was entirely ridiculous, but it was obvious that Blue Cross was running short on money because they took all the surplus money and donated it for George W. Bush, who, by the way, probably contributed to many trillions of dollars to the deficit. And, in other words, when you vote, consider your better interests. Consider what people are doing. Look at what they have done. You know, you run around and call people vermin, call people stupid, even when they have illustrious careers, and they've been through colleges and universities, they have law degrees, and got elected to, to attorney general offices and stuff like that, they're not stupid.
Thank you.
The person that says that type of stuff is. Thank you.
Mr. Boldenberg, will you notify the state of the citizens' complaint tonight about cracks in the sidewalls? Again, I know they were there last spring or something, and they did fill a lot of them, but notify them again?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Mike Mancini, Scranton. Tonight, I'm bringing it. In a city where we respond to things in seven weeks, seven months, and the case of Naog Park Pool Complex, seven years, we could do better. I showed up months ago, along with a few other people that cared, to the unhoused commission meeting. To my surprise, but yet not to my surprise, the mayor didn't even start with a pledge of allegiance. Took great offense to that. Back in August, myself and school board member Sean McCandrew showed up at the one-hour meeting with the mayor prior to her photo ops, the first Friday in August. She shut that down, too. Apparently, preoccupied Paige has her focus on other things. She promised to raise her right hand, promised safety, look into the sale of the sewer authority, progress for a better city than what we were before, promised to fix blight. Instead, our city's in the current condition that it's in. She changed the police and fire testing, and we had 59 lawsuits for almost $6.4 million since her recent election into office. We could do better than Pinocchio Paige. Crosswalks, better roads, street signs, holding utilities responsible, caring for our kids, we could do better. Procrastination, Paige is not the answer. We're going through difficult times right now. This election in November, like I said last week, is extremely important, but just as important is next November. That's when we determine who the next decision-maker will be here in the city. Now, I don't think we need an expansion team. This council has gone through so many applications, so many people being hired and fired, so many extensions, and a lot of the employees that make our major decisions are from outside the city. You know, like I said, we're a puzzle in a box. As long as we have this administration looking over things, the pieces will not be put back together. Today, Virgil Argent and I spoke to a gang member, 16-years-old, for over an hour. Number one, he should have been in school today, but he wasn't. We talked to him quite a bit, he was from the Bronx, and he's in the area. The area has a couple of kids. You know, there should be better things that he should be doing right now, but instead, the only thing he's, knows how to do is just run the streets. You know, this is not a future for our city. We could do better. Currently, from what I was told, there's about 300 kids that are active gang members in our Scranton school system. The youngest one is nine-years-old. Nine-years-old. Well, and then to top it all off, the school system has a problem with the child, they cannot notify children and youth, because there's laws protecting that. Children and youth is backlogged over 900 cases. We do not have a drug task force, we do not have a gang task force, we do not have a plan to put police on patrol in areas on foot or on e-bikes. You know, years ago, the calls were a lot different, but it was handled a lot differently. You know, we have immediate responses, we have a fabulous police department, amazing, we're blessed to have them every single day, right? But when they go out on these calls, the response is quick, but the calls that they take are heart-wrenching in some cases, and our officers have to see this on a daily basis. We could do better than this. I believe our city could do better. On Election Day, she's gonna be begging for votes, she's gonna be begging for forgiveness, and she's gonna use the ARPA funds to praise progress. Well, corruption, studies, and consultants are not the answer. Neither is paranoid Paige. Good evening, Council.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mel, sir, you already spoke.
Hello, Council. I'm Rick Little. I'd like to report and thank Scott Thomas from the library for accepting, for ordering and including the books by Brett Pike that I introduced them. I think this brings into focus the bigger picture on education, because people just, oh, we need schools. But what are the schools teaching the kids, what is it about, and how does the government figure into that? There's always a big focus on, on schools, especially around here, because since like 1981, there's federal funds coming in for schools, but there's not much consideration for what might be the better thing for kids is parents that, that want to homeschool their kids or, or send them someplace else, but all the, the impetus is the money goes to the state schools, and the states are indoctrinating people, and it's overwhelmed now because this is a sanctuary city, all these new people are coming in, overwhelming, it's not sustainable, and they'll be arguing about it. The, the one business that really will never run out of money is the law business. They just, you know, billable hours, they, it just goes on and on, people are arguing. Every agency goes, oh, you need a lawyer, you need, you know, a DMV lawyer, you need a, you know, an election lawyer. You can't afford a lawyer, and so, big change has to happen, and I think there's been a thing coming down the pike where they are destroying the American family. They've made families fatherless, and it's statistical. I, I mean, I ended up in this city through the Kings County Family Court. I spoke in, then Mayor Cuomo, Andrew Cuomo's Marlin Commission about, about, they were gonna fix their judiciary, and they picked out of thousands of people, 12 people were picked, I was one of them, and I told them, you should close down the family courts. I mean, there's a big brouhaha now about Roe versus Wade, it's put back to the states, but the family courts, since about 1989, that's when it really came in, through Mario Cuomo and the people that they, they put in, and there's two things, Joe Biden's Violence Against Women Act and the Title IV DNE for Child Support. And after that, 90, 95% of the families are fatherless. I haven't seen my daughter since she was eight, she's 24 now, because they get taught. It, it's messed up, the kids are the most important thing, and Trump's coming, and people have to take a cue from Trump on how to do things. I noticed when I was in family court, Clarence Thomas's, I needed, I needed, you know- I noticed when I was in family court, Clarence Thomas's, I needed, you know, pro se, I needed a case, you know, and I found Troxel versus Granville where it says, you know, parents have the right over the state. But we're a state indoctrinated society all over the place, and it's especially confusing around here with the newspaper. I'd just like to point out, when you read the newspaper, look where it comes from, because I'm reading the newspaper around here, the one newspaper, the Times-Tribune, and most of the articles are AP or from the New York Times. You know, this is, this is a globalist indoctrination, and they put all the focus on, you know, we gotta get, you know, my body, you know, we should be able to abort. There's things that are wrong, and they're letting the schools out tomorrow because Trump's coming. Kids have to learn, you know, it's the next generation, and we have to start thinking broad strokes in the future to sustain.
Thank you. And you were mistaken again. Scranton is not a sanctuary city. Mr. Boldenberg?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Just a few comments. It was mentioned that we weren't investing any money in stormwater. We are investing $23 million of ARPA funds to address stormwater. So, excuse me. Excuse me, Mr. Little. You spoke. I'm speaking now. Thank you. So, it was said that no money was being spent on stormwater. $23 million is being spent from the ARPA funds to address stormwater. So, I just wanted to correct that statement. There was a comment made about the sidewalks, and I agree, sidewalks should be corrected. I have a suggestion on how we could do it. We have five universities in the city, all nonprofits. They don't pay taxes to the city. University of Scranton gives measly $150,000 to the city in lieu of taxes. Maybe we can get all those universities and nonprofits to kick in some extra funding that would help us to improve the sidewalks here in the city. So, maybe the next place to speak would be at board meetings at the University of Scranton, and maybe they'd be willing to contribute a lot more money since they benefit from all of the protection of the Scranton Police and the Fire Department and all the street paving and everything, what have you. So, that's a thought there. The, as far as the dump truck, the pack master, I believe it's 30 days, Mr. Argenta. However, we do need to make sure that the city, if you could check, Frank, it should be the Scranton School District should be naming us additionally insured on their insurance policy. So, let's make sure that that's happening during that time when they're utilizing our pack master. And, you know, it was mentioned that council's job is to enforce laws. Now, council's job is to approve laws and ordinances and legislation concerning public safety, and it's the city administration's job to enforce those laws. So, we're part-time city council members who all have day jobs. It's impossible for us to be out there enforcing all of these laws on public safety. We pass the laws and the ordinances and the legislation, and then it's the city administration's job to, you know, enforce those laws. I believe that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few comments. Thank you, Mr. King, for the University of Scranton sidewalk comments that you made. I think the sidewalks that you were referring to were sidewalks in the University of Scranton neighborhoods, correct? Yeah, thank you. So, I think that's a good idea to look into when we're talking about sidewalk replacement, especially in that area. You know, what we heard about safety with the fireworks at the Italian Festival was very concerning. Thank you for leaving your information. Council will look into that to see what information we can get on that. As was kind of stated before, we're not the body that, you know, makes the agreement with the fireworks companies that are putting out those performances, but we could definitely look into that information for you. I got an update. For the last two weeks, we've been asking about 902 West Elm Street in the basin there. I was told that tomorrow Pennsylvania Water will be out to replace that basement, basin, so glad to hear that today, and I hope to get an update tomorrow saying they've been there to do the work. I did have some questions about the refuse trucks. I'm glad that Mr. King brought up the insurance piece. If we could definitely check on where we're at with insurance with the school district, and can we get a timeline, even though it may have said 30 days, could we just clarify the timeline on how long the district will be utilizing our refuse truck?
I will, sir.
Thank you. I did have some questions on leasing. At one point in time, the city was leasing refuse trucks, so how many, the question I had is, is the city still leasing refuse trucks? And may council please have the number of vehicles in the fleet? And the answer I got back was, the city owns its refuse and recycling trucks, so they just ignored the fact that we leased trucks at one point in time. But to clarify that, could we just ask how many vehicles we did lease? When did we lease them? And the terms of the leases, what was the length of time that we leased them for, getting the month and the year that those leases started and ended? And then the update was that we have 15 refuse trucks and four recycling trucks. I inquired about a sign, as we all saw on WNEP and also in the Scranton Times, there was information put out there that the city is getting signage for different areas of entry in the city, and I did inquire, I spoke to members of the Tripp Park Neighborhood Association who said quite a while back, I can't read that for me, quite a while back, the area that we spoke about on North Main Avenue and Euclid Avenue, a sign was to go in there, and they did speak to the Tripp Park Neighborhood Association about the wording on the sign. The administration did reach out to the Tripp Park Neighborhood Association, but they were a little bit confused on what they were asking the neighborhood association, so in turn, the neighborhood association was confused as what was being asked. The answer I got about the signage was, we asked the Tripp Park Neighborhood Association, they were not aware of such a project. But we do know that in six places in the city, there's going to be some signage going up. Can we confirm whether the signs along North Main Avenue and Main Avenue will state either West Scranton, Tripp Park, or just the broad-term Scranton, what that sign on Euclid Avenue and North Main Avenue will contain?
I will, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you very much. I asked some questions about the MOU/MOA with the DPW and Fire Departments with residency being lifted. Are they being allowed to live outside of the city? They're still in discussions with DPW and the Fire Bargaining Units, and responses will be forthcoming. So, we did not get an answer on whether those individuals are allowed or not allowed to move outside of the city at this point in time. Another question, Mr. Boldenberg, on the recycling contract. Can we get an update on our recycling contract, where the city is with negotiations, and has there been any headway? The last update that we got or that we received was that the city was reviewing the recycling program, and it stated that admin was requesting a meeting with representatives of the recycling center. Can we ask, has this meeting occurred and what the updates from that meeting would have been?
I'll get that information.
Thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. Thank you. First, I just wanted to thank the SPD because I noticed there are a number of abandoned vehicles within the Hill Section that were recently removed, so I wanted to thank them for that work. And just wanted to make a note about the concern about the sidewalks, which we do appreciate hearing. So, you'll notice that when you do walk around the neighborhoods or walk somewhere, the sidewalks, a lot of them are in disrepair, and that's something that we definitely need to work on as a city. I was happy that NeighborWorks included that into their Beautiful Blocks programming this year, and from what I was told, it was definitely a success, and they had more requests to, for people to repair their sidewalks than they had money for. But it's just, you know, it's definitely a need that residents have. It is up to the property owner, their sidewalks in terms of maintenance. So, it's not just something the city could come and do because it's someone else's property. But if we could find additional ways to incentivize people to fix their sidewalks, or if we're able to get, you know, the universities or colleges or others to help pay for it, then I'm all for it. Wanted to mention also on that topic, we've had complaints in the past a number of times about the curb, the curb cut not being handicap accessible at the intersection of Olive and Colfax. I wanted to see if we had any recent updates on that because I did receive another complaint about it.
We have not, Dr. Rothschild. I'll follow up.
Okay. If we can, once again, I know Ms. Klosky has been asking about it for a very long time, and I just don't understand why we can't get that curb cut corrected so that someone could have access to it.
I will. Their initial response was that it did not require any work, but I will follow up for more specifics.
Yeah, I mean, I was recently sent updated pictures of it, and it's a curve. There's no way someone with a wheelchair or walker or other device would be able to access that.
I'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you. And I'll forward the pictures, too.
Thank you.
Also, I had a previous paving request for the 500 block of O'Call Court, and I wanted to check in on the status of that.
That was submitted to the administration with the council priority pave list. It'll probably take place at the beginning of next year.
Okay. Are we expecting like an approval of our priority paving list? Or I'd like confirmation that it's going to be on the cities because just because we have it as a priority doesn't mean that the city does.
I'll get that. And in the interim, I'll see if they will. Pothole Patch, O'Call Court, was it the 500 block?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And I had inquired about the status of a property on Harrison Avenue, I believe it's 231, 233, and there was a porch on that property previously, and that has been gone for quite some time now. And it used to be condemned, but I haven't noticed a condemned sign on it, so I'm not sure if it was removed or what the issue is there. So, if we can find out.
I'll get a status on the property.
Thank you. And one more thing that I just wanted to mention, the complaint regarding the fireworks at the festival. I'm very sorry to hear that your children were injured as a result of the fireworks, and I want to make sure that we have the proper information and that the right to know is being responded to appropriately, and we should certainly have the permits for them prior to the fireworks going off. So, hoping that we can find that information for you because I want to make sure that we have it. That's really important to have. Thank you.
I will.
That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McCandry, do you have any motions or comments?
A few comments. Again, I apologize for what happened to your child or children with the fireworks. I know you want answers. Guess what? So do I. And like earlier, I said, Mr. Boldenberg, please gather as much of this information as you can for us, and I appreciate it very much. The Home Rule Charter, last week we inquired about it. They put it back on the website. Obviously, they didn't hear us, so may you, could you please do that again? And if you can find, dig up a copy, a clean copy for Mr. Coy, give him one if you don't mind. I'd appreciate it. Also, the budget exchange between DPW and parks, let's check into that, too. Let's get an answer, you know, clarification, what actually happened or why. Is it salary? Is it money? Is it for something that we're not aware of? I think we should find out. Also, I want an update about recycling discussions. I brought it up a couple of weeks ago, and we were told they're in discussions. So, let's find out how that went and give us an update. The sidewalk thing, I agree with my colleagues here about, and I think this gentleman here kind of zoned in on that the sidewalks might be the property of the U. And if that's the case, take care of them. Fix them. I believe they can afford them. They don't need help from NeighborWorks to do that. If they're in disrepair, they're also a liability. So, and you know, this can, this is an issue that code enforcement can probably take a look at. There's something on the books for sidewalks that are in disrepair. So, let's take a look at that, too, Mr. Boldenberg, if you can put it on the radar with code enforcement.
I will.
So, last week, let me see what else. Okay. So, last week, I brought up the possibility, why won't this open up here? The possibility of a solution for 307, the lookout in 307. And Mr. Boldenberg contacted the administration. I said, I don't want to step on any union jobs because that's not what we're trying to do, just trying to find a solution, where the students at the Career Technology Center's Masonry Department offered to fix these, not, you know, a short-term which solution, which is, you know, safety-driven, and I agree, we need more lighting up there. I think we're all in agreement with that. I think we were heard when we brought that up. But the response I got is, is the city engineer is looking into it. They're going to take a look at 307 and make sure it's safe enough for students to be there. And yeah, I'm in agreement with that. So, we'll see what happens with that, and hopefully before snow starts flying because, you know, it does happen sometimes in October. So, we'll keep our eyes and ears open for that. Now, this again bothered me last week, and it continues to bother me. So, Mr. Schuster asked two weeks in a row if the MOU that we had to rush through and vote quickly on, because we had to do it, or the MOA, actually it was an MOA, was discussed with the DPW Police, I mean, the Fire Departments, that has it been ratified and is it in effect? Because we're hearing on the street that there might be, something might happen to people that move out of the city. So, my understanding is, the MOA was, before we even voted on it, because that was a concern of mine, that everything was taken care of, right? And the answer again we get this week is, we're still in discussion. The discussion already happened. We voted on it. What discussion? Right? And then part C of that same question is, Mr. Schuster asked at this time, are SPD, SFD, DPW, clerical employees allowed to move out of the city? Or is this factor still being negotiated with the labor attorneys? Again, the answer is, response is forthcoming. The police want it in arbitration, right? So, it looks like to me, and this was what I was afraid of, and this is what I was worried about, the only ones who are allowed to live out of the city are cabinet members or new hires. But it looks like, if we get an answer, the response is still forthcoming, that means it's not happening. The big MOU or MOA that we had to rush through and make sure we voted on it, it looks like that maybe the legal attorney still has their hands in this for whatever reason and using it in ways that may not be fair or that we agreed upon and voted on. But response forthcoming, in discussion. This already should have taken place. This is why I was worried about this, and my suspicions maybe were correct for this. So, I agree. Let's find out what discussions are being had. The contracts are ratified and settled. The MOU we voted, or the MOA we voted on. What responses are we waiting for and why? And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McCandry. The city has begun with their operating budget, and I said I would update everyone on it as I met with the city. So, yesterday I met with Eileen Zepriani and Matt Dominus to go over the beginning of the operating budget for the City of Scranton. So, so far, all booked. Chief Judge has all of their information in for the budget. Chief Judge, when he gets back from helping the people that were flooded and from that last storm, last I heard, it would be about the 10th, he will be home, and he will enter all his information on there to move forward with the budget. Matt and Eileen went over with me the budget, explained pretty much everything from the $800,000 that we lost from the hospitals becoming a nonprofit and other things that we should be concerned about. And also, we were in over like payroll prep tax, and we all talked about employee raises, having a real funded capital budget and what that does to our actual budget and how that, everything is adjusted accordingly there. So, we will be meeting again, and I will keep everybody updated on what's happening with their operating budget or according to what the information that I've received from them. So, the update from the code enforcement and the blight So, the update from the code enforcement and the blight that we've been cleaning up, these are the responses that I've got from licensing inspection that we've been working on for the past few months. So, this is since the last council meeting. They have towed eight more cars. They have ticketed 300 Baca Crown Avenue a tractor with multiple flat tires, and, and stated that if it's not removed, it will be towed. The lot at 728 Alder Street, that, they contacted the owner, and the owner actually cleared the lot, and said they were going to be planting grass there. 930 Hickory Street, the noise complaint and the structure, and the construction noise, that is that, the new building going up. And if there's any complaints, like, after 8:00 PM, it's 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, but that ordinance is enforced by the Police Department, so the licensing inspection, so if anybody hears noise, you can call the police, and they could enforce that ordinance, if, so if you hear it after that time, or if you hear it before that time in the morning, and you're concerned about it. But, that is the Scranton Police Department. 1520, 1522 Pittston Avenue, the porch has been repaired. 723 River Street, the grass has been cut, and the pool has been emptied below the site where the inspector can see it from outside the yard. We're not allowed to enter their yard unless we have a good reason. So, it looks like it's been emptied, but they can't see it 100%. So, the 114, 116 Crown Avenue, the citations were all filed, and it is now at the magistrate's office. 414 South Webster, all of those citations were all filed, and that is also at the magistrate's office. The 615, 617 Beach Street, they received multiple stop work orders, multiple quality of life tickets, and that now is also at the magistrate's office. So, what happens there is, once, and we'll continue to get complaints about it, but once it gets to the magistrate's office, there's not much more we can do until we get, get into, further into looking into taking these properties. But, right now, if it's at the magistrate's office, there's not a lot we can actually do, except go out and cite them again, but evidently it doesn't mean anything to these people, so it would be just brutal to go out and do it again. 1616 Mulberry Street, again, multiple issues, and that is also at the magistrate's office. And this afternoon, when I was speaking to the last code enforcement officer, they were in South Side, they towed two more abandoned vehicles in Scranton, and one up on the Hill Section, and they were moved, eight more vehicles were moved from properties. If they find properties on, on city people's yards, they will actually go knock on the door and inform the people that they are illegal to have. So, the last eight that they encountered, actually today, those people moved, actually moved those. And the last thing I have is the traffic lights that are currently being supplied, or installed on almond cedar and on maple and cedar. They're the ones that we've had, we've been waiting for about a year and a half, two years, but they are being installed as we speak. That's all I have.
Before we move further, the properties that you were just talking about, were they general council inquiries about blight properties?
Everyone, I, whatever I do, I follow up on them.
Okay. It's not part of the blight group that recently started?
Not yet. Not yet. These will be, but I'm trying to prep it to see what we can actually do to, and, and the cars, the cars and the trailers, the tractor trailers. This one particular code officer makes a point to actually try to see the homeowner and explain to them, really, the code. Today, they actually moved two tractors from a yard, on, they're parked on the side of the yard, and the people said, well, we just didn't know. But, they did remove them today, and they moved them, and then there was eight other cars that were abandoned, but the people did move them. There are also, he has a list of 110 cars in, in between South Side and Hill Section, because that's where they are right now, that are abandoned, or there's transmissions on the ground, there's more, I mean, it's, it's a disaster. But, they are working on that. There are some that the Police Department handled, and there are some that the code enforcement. So, they are working together, so we, it is actually moving forward, and I, I know to date, there is about 92 vehicles moved or towed since the beginning of the year. So, finally, we are moving ahead on that.
Okay. And then, the budget piece, they wanted, Matt and Eileen wanted to meet with individual council members, but they're, they're still going to be here for caucus.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I said, because I, I requested to go and, and to be kept up to date, if they would allow that to happen, and, and they did agree to happen, because I'd rather not have a surprise the 29th of the month than say, well, here's, here's our new budget, and, you know.
Okay. I didn't, I saw, after you said that, I saw the email that went out, so I was just making sure that we weren't doing it individually, it was going to happen in public as well.
No, I did, I did think that all council members should be invited, if they wanted to go and discuss anything on the budget, so before they actually come here.
Okay.
So, but that was just an idea.
Thanks.
Okay.
5B, for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Social Contract LLC to perform services for the Community Violence Intervention and Prevention Program, Phases, Design Project, and Contract Management.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5C, for introduction, a resolution, appointment of Megan Alpert as a member of the Scranton Housing Authority to fill the unexpired term of Mary Ann Sinclair, beginning immediately and expiring September 27, 2026.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I would like to thank Mrs. Mary Ann Sinclair for her many years of service to the city, serving, you know, on the Housing Authority.
Yeah. On the question, I'd also like to thank Mary Ann Sinclair for her years of service on that committee, and I'm sure there'll be a couple more as we move this through Seventh Order.
I, too, would like to thank her for her devotion to, I mean, years and years of devotion to the city and, and the people, so, sad to see her go.
Thank you to Mary Ann Sinclair for her, for her service to the city. We greatly appreciate it. I do have the pleasure of knowing Megan Alpert personally, and I believe she'll be a great addition.
Thank you. And, and we do need to thank all of the, all of the boards that we have in Scranton, and all the people that dedicate their time into doing, most of these are free, so it is, it's a great help with these people actually doing these boards. So, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth Order, 6A, reading by title, filed a council number 39, 2024, an ordinance, ratifying and approving an intergovernmental agreement of cooperation and memorandum of understanding between the City of Scranton's Department of Public Works and the Scranton School District regarding the borrowing of a refuse truck.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Councilman, I miss. Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh Order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption, filed a council number 38, 2024, ratifying and approving an intergovernmental agreement of cooperation and memorandum of understanding between the City of Scranton's Fire Department and Borough of Dunmore regarding the borrowing of a spare city fire engine apparatus.
As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 127, 2024, sewage facilities planning module revision for new land development located in Providence Road and Olive Street for BRT ICE LP.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 128, 2024, sewage facilities planning module revision for land, new land development located in the 300 block of Madison Avenue for the University of Scranton.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D, previously tabled, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, filed a council number 31, 2024, approving and accepting the City of Scranton capital budget, which includes a capital reserve fund spending plan for the year 2025 pursuant to section 904 of the city's Home Rule Charter and file of council number 11 of 2024.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, we discussed this in caucus. The one concern, there was no funding put in there for the study for a new firehouse up on the East Mountain for replacement of Engine 10. We were assured we got legislation, we received legislation today from the administration for an LSA grant to actually do that study. The one thing that council is going to request in that, once they do decide to go out for the study, is that the study is focused on replacement of a firehouse strictly on the East Mountain. And, that doesn't necessarily have to be in the exact spot, but somewhere to remain on East Mountain.
Yeah. So, that was what I was going to bring up on the question as well. We did have a good discussion. We did hold up the capital budget this year, because funding wasn't appropriated for Engine 10. In the past, a study came up that had discussed moving Engine 10 off of East Mountain, and council wasn't in agreement. I think at this point in time, I, I'm pretty sure that we have a unanimous decision to keep Engine 10 on East Mountain, and we'd like to make sure that, moving forward with this, we get a, a guarantee from the city that we're going to keep that fire station on, on East Mountain.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.